All right, it's 6:30. I'd like to call the order. The planning commission meeting for the city of Dayton for Thursday, October 2nd, 2025. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the third item on the agenda is the role of the planning commission. It's in the, on the agenda itself. Essentially, we're a discretionary panel that gives a recommendation that goes, moves forward to the city council. City council actions are final. Again, we're a discretionary panel that gives a recommendation. So there's item four, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Seeing no additions or deletions of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Carries three to zero. Fifth item on the agenda is a consent agenda. This is consent agenda items are routinely discussed and approved all at once. The only item tonight is approval of the planning commission minutes of September 4th, 2025. Any discussion on those minutes, corrections, or otherwise?
None for me.
No.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion's made to approve and second the planning commission minute, minutes of September 4th, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Next item on the agenda, we're flying by, I should be chair every day.
Although we are a minute late based on the thing.
You don't want to say that too loud.
Next item on the agenda is our open forum. This is open to the public for any, anybody who wants to comment on any item that is not on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. It doesn't look like there's anybody in the audience. Is there anybody online that would like to participate in the open forum?
Mr. Chair, there is nobody online.
All right, seeing that there's no one online, I don't think I have to open the open forum, but we can open and close it. For all in favor of moving forward, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Three to zero. Item seven is a council update. We have the mayor here, if you want to give the update.
Okay, September 9th, we had a presentation by Metro West on some of the improvements they've made to try to mitigate some of those misses that they had. Discussion on the DNR landing in the Old Village. There was a layout that we were presented, and there was just, there was a lot of discussion, but nothing significant was changed. It looks pretty good. Discussion on utility boxes. There's apparently, the EDA has been, has wanted the city to deal with dilapidated utility boxes, and we had some discussion on how we can deal with those. I think it ended up being back to, you know, whatever, the same system we use for other things is complaint driven. If there's a problem with the utility box, the resident and/or business can call the utility and/or call City Hall and see if they can resolve it, but wasn't much, it wasn't much, it looked, sounded like it wasn't much we could do. Bates Street vacation easement, you guys had seen this, I think a month ago, or a month and a half, two months ago. It was initially rejected, and then we, there was some information that the, the, one of the properties that's being improved may need a variance if we did that, or if we didn't remove the easement, and that switched some votes. So in the end, we ended up removing the, beginning easement for to zero. And we amended, passed an amendment to the franchise fee to reduce certain ag meters from, from the, let's see, how did we do that? They're normally, they get the large meters because they have the grain drive running, and so they're running Buku gas through that meter, and 10 months out of the year, the meter's not running. Normally, the utility shuts those off, but they no longer shut them off, and so this was a way to reduce that fee that they would end up paying, that the ag lot wouldn't end up paying. We passed the preliminary levy at nine percent above last year. That is the high watermark, so in December, it can only go down. Discussed the Old Village water tower plans. So we did approve that engineering will go through and see what it's going to take to get a tower down there, see what it's going to take money-wise. And we approved a study on Fernbrook traffic to kind of help nudge the county into looking at roundabouts at, at some of the intersections. That was approved, and then we had a closed meeting. Yeah, better leave that at that. And then for the 22nd, we, we had to recap those closed sessions, so if you want to know what happened during those, it was a lot of legal verbiage, so you might want to listen to that. The, the bottom line is, is that we will probably be making some changes to our personnel policies regarding part-time staff. Vacation, easement vacation for Dayton Fields. You had seen that Platte, we also did the Platte for Dayton Fields. I believe that was preliminary and final. And you guys had already seen that, it was pretty much approved as you approved it. There was an update to the public data request policy. We also approved audit services. So we have a requirement, anytime, I think the city spends, I think it's 750K for the federal money on something, it has to be audited. Is that, was that, does that ring a bell? I think that's what it was. So we went above that for the intersection, the interchange, and so those monies has, the expenditures have to be audited. And the final item was the Parkway streetlight, so we did approve a little bit on that, on that north streetlight. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda is our commission business. The first item is item 8A, which is a public hearing. This is consideration of a variance request to a side yard setback requirements in the R1 single-family residential district. This is for a property located at 16070 Fair Oaks Lane, and it's Jeff Anderson, who's the petitioner. Hayden, if you could walk us through the proposal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. As the chair, I mentioned the located address here, let me see if I can, there it goes. The subject property is 16070 Fair Meadows Lane. That is within the Rush Creek Landing development. Believe that this property is right on Fair Meadows Lane, and I think it's Rush Creek Parkway. And the applicants have submitted a variance request to the side yard setback requirements in the R1 district. Currently, the R1 district standard is a 10-foot side yard setback, and I'll get into a little bit more detail here, but the home was built in 2016, and at that time, under the R1 district standards, the setback requirement was a 15 feet total between the two adjacent properties, where if one property was built at 10 feet, at a 10-foot setback, the next, the next house over could be set at a five-foot setback totaling 15 feet. That subsequently has changed after Rush Creek Landing was developed, and this property was approved at a, at a setback of eight feet, compliant with the zoning ordinance at the time, and has since changed from that 15 combination to just a 10-foot flat from the property line, essentially requiring a 20-foot setback between the homes that are adjacent to each other. Here's just a brief overview of kind of the timeline of the development approval and the, those existing ordinance amendments that are now in place. The building permit was issued in June of 2016, and going back, in 2018, there was an ordinance amendment that removed that 10-foot, five-foot setback requirement to just be a flat-out seven-and-a-half-foot setback for all properties in the R1 district. Three years later, the city adopted another ordinance repealing and replacing completely the residential district standards, and as such, the R1 properties at that time were required to meet a 10-foot minimum setback. I'll just note for the commission that when the Rush Creek Landing development was proposed, it was approved as a planned unit development. One of the requests that was a part of that approval was the side yard setbacks be set at minimum five feet for that development. The planning commission and city council respectively rejected that flexibility. So the, the flexibilities that were offered by the planned unit development was a reduction in the reforestation requirements, as well as the minimum lot size and minimum lot widths within that. So those were the only two flexibilities that were approved at that time. Now, just for the knowledge of the planning commission, if that flexibility was approved by way of the PUD, that flexibility carries through with the development because it is zoned as such. But since it was not that, this is essentially the requirement for the variance request. Now, as I've mentioned previously, in terms of variance review, by state statute, variances are required to meet a three-part test. This is a little bit interesting of a situation, given the request. The property owner are, are not requesting to further exceed that eight-foot setback, but just naturally extend that, that existing setback line by 39 linear feet towards the backside of the house. And I'll have pictures that show this as well. I noted as well within that, there is a section within the nonconformity clause about specific exemptions to the yard setback, or the yard, the lot size, the yards, and the building height, that actually does exempt existing properties from those requirements being met. So essentially, the extension of this would be allowed if it were to include something like, language that included setbacks within that, that provision of the code, and that nonconformity section of the code is in the packet as well. After discussions with the city attorney, although it does say yard, and in my opinion, the yard is established by the building line and the property line, the attorney has advised that it does not specifically call out setbacks, whereas it would not otherwise be exempt with the existing language. So that's another reason why we are here with the variance request today. So going through this, we had, we found that there was findings of fact for both sides of this variance request, given the unique circumstance, not only to the property itself, but to the neighborhood of Rush Creek Landing in general. Without doing a thorough review of the as-built surveys within that development, staff can still confidently confirm that there are legally nonconforming structures that have been subject to this R1 ordinance change. So going through this, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning ordinance. It's pretty self-explanatory, the building addition, and not altering the character of the locality. This is actually where it would get into, these setbacks were established with this development at that time. Even with the expansion of the home within this area, it would not alter the character of the locale. But really, the sticking point is the plight of the landowner is due to the circumstances unique to the property, not created by the property owner. So this is a little bit of a two-part scenario here, where the property was, the plight of the property was not created by the property owners. However, this is not necessarily unique to the property itself, given that there are other properties within this neighborhood that are subject to this issue as well. Now, being that this is our first request with this type of variance, as setback rules change over time, staff felt that this was a good opportunity to get some guidance from the planning commission and city council on what you would expect to see moving forward with similar things like this. I'll just note for the record as well, in review of situations like this, if the property owners propose that the setback of the expansion area were to be five feet or six feet from the property line, essentially, that would be in conflict with the variance ordinance, in staff's opinion. However, given that this is just an extension of the existing property line, not further encroaching within that yard, staff wanted to have a little bit of a dialogue to, to walk through this with the planning commission. So here's just a couple of pictures of the site. You can see here, this is the side of the home, basically the existing setback location, and on the backside of this, this is the extension of it. So it is proposed to be flush with the existing parcel, or with the existing building, and not further encroach within any of the setback areas that were originally approved. For the matters of the public hearing, I do want to note for the record that we did get two comments from people surrounding the area that were in full support of this request, one being the adjacent property owner, who would be otherwise the more affected property within this situation. And both of those comments had, had reflected positive support for the request.
Hayden, can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Pretending this picture here, do, do we have the plans to understand, is it continuing the roof line of the garage there, or how's, how does that roof line of the proposed addition tie into the existing house?
From my understanding, the pitch is going to be the same as the, what is existing there, so the roof line is going to extend as, as the existing garage area is currently.
So it's just going to take these surfaces and just?
Bring it back 39 linear feet.
All right. Okay.
And this is, it's a walkout basement, or is it a?
Lookout.
Lookout, so you're, I mean, you're extending the basement also?
It's okay to speak.
Yeah, please, please approach the, the microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and if you could just, well, we could do it later, but, but if you could just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Not a problem. My name is Jeff Anderson. Our address is 16070 Fair Meadows Lane in Dayton. So to answer the question, what we're doing is adding a main floor bedroom and full, like, primary suite bathroom, so the roof line will be as close to that as possible, with the understanding that it can encroach on the window on the top corner, otherwise you would have drainage problems. And then the building, for the most part, is going to be built on stilts with a shed underneath potentially.
Gotcha.
That is still in decision mode, but the, it's the width going out to the edge of the garage that.
Right.
So continuation, just main level, not second level, and then it would wrap around and kind of square off our deck.
Gotcha.
And this is repsee, Anderson, and just maybe one more comment, too. The elevation of the roof will actually match our existing sun porch though, yeah, on the end as well.
Perfect.
Which was a recommendation by the builder.
Who can't be here because he has COVID.
He has COVID.
Nice.
Could join online. Hopefully gets better soon.
Great.
Well, thank you for that, that explanation. Do you want to continue? You guys could stay there, I'm sure we're going to have more questions for it.
All right, sounds good.
Sure. So just to, just to wrap things up, the role of the planning commission is to conduct a public hearing for the variance request and consider providing a recommendation to the city council on this request. I've already mentioned the emails that were received by neighbors within the community. Just a little note on staff's recommendation, again, while findings of fact can be provided for both approval or denial of this request, staff is comfortable, given the request, that if the planning commission feels that these types of requests in these situations with the setbacks changing after a neighborhood is already built out, that these are unique, I guess, unique specific to the property, this would warrant a variance if, if that is the route that we are willing to go. So with that, I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Can you put the picture back on?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the, the existing level of the siding on the garage, that's going to be the approximate level of the floor on the addition?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Hayden?
What, what were the plans for, for the exterior moving down?
The same.
The same siding?
The same siding. It'll be identical.
So if you're going to use storage area under there, it will be, it'll be sided in?
It would be, it would be a sided area that matches to the best of the ability, with the understanding that, as you guys know, depending on when the house was built, can you match the siding exactly? But to the best of their ability, they will match it, and then keep consistency so that it doesn't look like an addition, but rather part of the original build.
And I'll just note as well, Commissioner Grover, that if the planning commission were to recommend approval, that would be a suggestive recommendation of, or condition of approval for the variance, so that would be just included in the resolution to verify that that gets carried out.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Questions for the planner?
I have some. I'm just curious about a few things. So this is a PUD, and at the time, requirement was just 15 feet between houses.
Correct.
I wonder how they thought that was going to work out later on?
Yeah, and essentially, that that meant that, say that one property was decided to build at five feet, the other side was required to be a minimum 10 feet.
So at the time, the PUD was approved, it was 15. Given that that was part of the PUD, how, how does our adjustment of those ordinances? It seems odd that it affects that PUD, because to me, that, that kind of violates the point of the PUD.
So the, the PUD only offers flexibility that's called out specifically in the resolution for those.
Yep.
Because this was straight R1 zoning, with the exception of the lot width and the lot size, the remaining areas that aren't subject to that language within the resolution, these properties being that they're zoned R1 are subject to any R1 standards that come after the fact. So it would have had to have just been called out that this area, regardless of amendments or something like that, would be able to retain that zoning requirement.
Right. Yeah, it just seems odd, because, I mean, even though it's not specified in the PUD, it's assumed at the time. And, and so when you change that after, later on, it just seems odd to me. I, I guess, when I look at the Hennepin County map versus what you have, it almost looks like the line's a lot more to the north than indicated, but.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, and that's why I actually, I reached out to our public works director and got the grading as-bills of those two properties to verify. The line does appear to be off a little bit on GIS. You can never take the GIS lines as exact, but it, the, this property was setback from the side yard at eight feet, and that adjacent property is 10 feet based on the grading as-built.
Okay. And just for clarification, the setbacks are to the building itself, regardless of the use of the building, so we're not differentiating between principal and accessory structures, correct?
That is correct. Now, there have been provisions within specific zoning ordinances that say if it's a garage side, it could be five feet, or if it is a dwelling side, it has to be 10 feet. In this case, that is not the situation.
Thank you. Any other questions for the planner before we open up the public hearing?
I think if any questions, maybe just requests for future ones, to just make sure we have a site plan that clearly shows the addition. I mean, you got great drawings and everything, but then we're like missing the site plan that shows exactly how this thing is sitting on the, on the property. We've, I mean, you got the site plan of the existing house, and then there's one that shows just a blue line, but it doesn't represent it because it sticks out behind the house, too. So just, if we can watch out for that to make sure, especially if we're looking at variances for side yard setback, let's like, let's see it in context.
Certainly.
So, but I mean, I can piece it together, but yeah. Thank you. No questions.
Well, it's 6:55, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody online that would like to discuss questions or comments?
There's nobody online.
I have a couple of comments to make, and again, I appreciate you guys coming here tonight and requesting what you're requesting out there for your property. You know, when, when reviewing this application and hearing what the planner has to say tonight, to me, it seems like this is a, something that I think the city needs to work on, rather than what the proposal's really, you know, what kind of angst the proposal is actually going to cause. I don't think it's going to cause much problems. Sounds like you've already talked with, or there is support of the most affected property, which is a property to the north. Looking at this picture, if I was a property to the north and I had concerns with you, I'd say move your, your.
The trampoline?
Trampoline.
Yeah.
The trampoline's just as close as, in a closed structure, and by reading the application, it sounds like you're, you're helping with an aging parent who you want, to want to help care for, and that's the whole reason for that. I don't know why we would want to deny an application for, you know, with that kind of reason behind why we need to put an addition onto our house. The one question I do have of you is obviously, you guys live in an HOA? Have you, it's not HOA?
Capstone does not have an HOA. So we're part of the Capstone neighborhood, and for clarification, this was the model home. We didn't choose to build it. We were on our way to go meet with a builder, and I said, "Let's take a look." And then we fell in love with it, and they actually had put it on the market the day before we took a look at it.
Awesome.
So.
Well, you don't need to check with their HOA then.
Nope, there is no HOA. The HOA is our neighbor.
But we did share it with our, on our community Facebook page, and just made sure people were aware. They also got the notification, so we just like opened it up to questions and.
Obviously, they're all here, then.
Yeah.
Bad talk.
Well, and another point of clarification, too, is that our daughter plays hockey with Peter's daughter, and he lives up the street, so it's.
Gotcha. Well, so, I mean, just to keep going with, with what I was going to present here tonight is that, you know, looking at the three-pronged approach that we have to look at as far as approving the variance, I fully understand that this is a reasonable use of the property. You're not asking for anything else than expanding a single-family home, and you're not encroaching any closer to a property line than you're already, are at, right? So really, the question tonight is a function of when the zoning code changed, how it affected this property, and it's affecting in a way that you can't use the property in a way you normally would have been able to use it had that code not been changed, right? So to me, that means the, the second prong of that approach, or of, of approving a variance, this isn't something that you as a homeowner, it, it was not something you created. The hardship is not something that you created. It is something that the city created in further defining their rules and regulations, and now it's put you in a spot where you can't expand on a home that makes sense to expand on. And the, the third prong there, the essential character of the neighborhood's not going to change. I don't think it's going to change with this type of addition. The next thing to look at is, okay, well, can you build what you want to build and be within? within the confines of the code? And I think of the extra two feet makes a difference. Number one, it's not gonna give you, if you were only expanding at four feet out and not the six feet out, you're not gonna get the room that you're looking for. Probably floor plans will be messed up. And it's gonna make the side of the building look kind of funky, right? With all these undulations looking down that property, could be some building concerns with that as well. So, it makes sense for you to expand out all the way to, in my opinion, all the way out to where that garage sits, and to square off kind of that corner there. The other thing, and this is something that Hayden alluded to also, and the Dayton's code is close, it's just not close enough as far as addressing these types of non-conforming uses, right? So, there are many other communities out there. I work for the city of, of New Hope, and we have specific language in our ordinance that addresses exactly what Hayden was saying, but more specifically, I guess, than what Dayton does, and it would allow for this type of encroachment through an administrative permit. Now, you don't even have to get a variance, as long as you're not expanding that non-conforming use. And in this case, it would be, as long as you're not getting closer than whatever that established setback is, and I think our language in New Hope actually says setbacks, and that's the differentiating factor here. But all the other communities that I've worked for have that specific language that say, "Hey, look, we understand that there's gonna be non-conforming structures that are created due to ordinance changes, whether it's something that the city anticipated or not, but the fact that you can continue that line of non-conformity if it's height, or if it's, it's closeness to a property line, we're okay with that, as long as you're not getting any closer." And so, given that other communities understand that and recognize that this is a situation that's prevalent, and have some consideration for that, and the fact that Dayton's close, just not close enough for you guys not to have to be here tonight, I'm in full support of the variance. So, with that, I'd open it up to any other commissioner of those comments.
You know, regarding what you just said, do we have, and I was wondering that too, do we have a mechanism, and it sounds like maybe there is one? The intent of the 10-foot setback was really new developments. It was not intended to impact already in place developments. And in fact, it, it wasn't intended to do this, to, to cause this, this problem. And so, if we've got a way to fix that, it would be nice to start looking at that.
Nice way.
Yeah.
I, I think just tweaking that, that ordinance that you checked with your, your city attorney on, and the fact that it didn't put the word setback, with the word setback was not in there, maybe including that, to be more specific, would help alleviate these types of concerns. And then the next question as well, do we wanna take care of this administratively, or do we still wanna bring people to, you know, whatever kind of, whatever process it might be? If it's just a permit, or if it's a, I know some communities use the term administrative variance even, they even call it a variance, because they understand that you're, you're not building within code, but you're within reasonable confines that are defined in the code, that's, that allow you to do that. But I would suggest some language to be, to be looked at.
Yeah, it is very close. We had a long conversation with the attorney about this, and although I, my personal opinion was that a yard could be addressed similar to what a setback is, because you have to have a setback established to establish the yard area, including that section within the non-conformity clause, will clean up this. And if it was my suggestion, I would recommend establishing with situations like this, an administrative variance. The only reason that I say that is because then we can at least document the reason for allowing something that is otherwise, if you look at the code on face value, why the administrative variance was allowed, and that can be incorporated into any building permit approvals, and get filed with that in the software. So, those would be some things that I will likely be looking to bring back in the near future to the planning commission and city council.
But those things take time.
Certainly.
To develop. That doesn't help them on their timeline. So, I'm in favor of, of granting the variance now too. And then you guys look back and fix the language, so that 14 other people don't have to line up, and maybe in similar situations to go through this.
Certainly.
Yeah, I agree with your assessment too. I just have to, can't help myself, but just square off that corner.
I know, right?
It's just gonna make the room more functional, and there's, your roof line has to go out anyway, so there's no reason to angle that. That's just the architect in me. I'm supportive of it too. I don't have any questions. I like that you're just, you're maintaining the, the line of the garage, your roof line will be close enough to match, whether it has to change to hit that window or not, but you won't notice this from the front of the property. And if your neighbor next door is good with it, then it's a nice improvement for your property and for your family, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that with what you wanna do to the home, it's gonna make it look better from the neighbors or from the street, so...
Yeah. Yeah, you're actually adding some windows over there too.
It's what they should've gotten when they sold you the house in the first place, right?
Yes.
Yeah, other, I mean, you're also promoting aging in place, right? And you're adding value to a home, right? And so, those are obviously things that any city would, would be benefited from, be able to provide that type of housing for all cycles of life, and to improve a home in a way where you're adding value and back to the tax base and so on and so forth. So, with that, do we have any other, anybody out, back online that has any concerns? Alright, I'll close the public hearing, 7:05, and take it back to the planning commission. Any other last words of concerns or comments? Plan and commission?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the setback variance?
I'll second the motion.
The motion is made and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is carried at three to zero. This will be presented to the council on the October, is it 21st or the 7th? Or maybe it's not?
14th.
14th.
Yeah, with the added Tuesday in September, we should be able to get this to the city council by the October 14th meeting.
October 14th meeting. Sounds good. Well, good luck with the...
Yeah, thank you. We greatly appreciate all of your time. You're welcome.
Not a problem. Have a great night.
Hope the project goes well.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Alright, moving on. Item 8B is a discussion regarding multifamily and event center parking regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. I just wanna note, before we get into this conversation, what staff's intention is to just introduce the discussion, and to have further discussion in the future, followed by any potential action that is directed by the planning commission.
Before we get started on the rest of the meeting, we have three of the five commission members here right now. It is a quorum. However, would staff feel more comfortable with this conversation with a full commission? Are you okay with presenting it to the three of us?
Well, we'd be fine either way. I will say that I did get feedback from the both planning commissioners that are not available, that have already provided feedback. And actually, now that I'm thinking about it, it probably would've been beneficial to print that out for the commission to have as part of the discussion. But with that, we'll certainly...
Let's move forward then.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
So, just to, and, and these don't have to go too elaborative conversations, as these are just introductory, but staff has kind of been taking note of a couple of the comments that have been provided by planning commission and city council related to potential ordinance updates. Some of them, from staff's opinion, could warrant an update to the ordinance language. In other areas, it might be just a matter of explanation and describing the detail of what the ordinance's intention is. So, to start, we just wanted to make note of the multifamily parking to, we've noticed from both planning commission and city council that their big comments made that multifamily parking within the city in terms of the requirements is overparked. So, we just wanted to dive into that a little bit. I didn't provide a slide on it, but it is in your packet. There was a comparison that showed the, all the surrounding communities to Dayton and what their requirements would be. I believe the only one that was substantially different was Ramsey, as they have a new code with their, I believe after I had talked to the planner, that code revision came along with some public transportation efforts that had happened within Ramsey as well. So, that is a factor to that. But it does compare what the Parkway neighborhood as a recent approval was for a multifamily apartment building. So, the current code is two spaces per dwelling unit, one of which is enclosed, whether that is, I believe it's either just covered parking underground. I don't believe that the city code currently allows accessory buildings such as garages on multifamily developments. So, just a comparison in terms of, the Parkway neighborhood's approval was 345 spaces, essentially a reduction of 33 spaces as part of the PUD requirements. The covered parking ratio was still met at one to one. So, just to, just to touch, there are mechanisms within the code already that allow for flexibility from the, the straight language of the parking standard. They have a couple of options actually, and one is providing a proof of parking that is allowed to bank up to 25% of the requirement, as long as you can show that there is ample space to add parking to the site if need be. Typically, if a proof of parking plan was provided by the applicant to the city, the city as a part of a condition of approval could reserve the right to require them to install parking if we hear traffic concerns start to arise after the development is in and the apartments are full. So, that's one mechanism that allows for some flexibility there. And the other one is, they could provide sufficient evidence of a, of a parking study that is done by a professional that is presented to the city council, for the city council to make that determination that a reduction in parking is warranted based on that study, where no proof of parking would be necessary. So, those are a couple of ways. I do just wanna note that there are cities, there's no one, one-size-fits-all for apartment parking, or any parking really for that matter, but there are some alternatives that could be reviewed or further researched, and that is switching the unit count from a unit counter, a per-unit basis to a per-bedroom basis, essentially having those studios of one-bedrooms be offset for parking by those three-bedroom apartments that may be utilized by a family that only has two parking spaces, but three bedrooms would require three spaces. And the other one would be the city would have the opportunity, obviously, to just reduce the required numbers on a per-unit basis to decrease that requirement. So, those are a couple of things that I just wanted to note for the council, or for the planning commission, and given these flexibilities that are currently existing within this code, does the planning commission feel that there is room for improvement here within this, or otherwise? And I will just note as well, we have two existing apartment buildings on Balsam Lane. Just through the review of after those apartment buildings were built, we have never received a complaint in that area regarding parking concerns, or lack thereof. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on this one.
So, is the current proposal to change it to be per-bedroom, or you're just throwing that out as a...
Just throwing it out there, as this is one of, an alternative that could be researched. That is actually a recommendation that was provided by Commissioner Brown in his email, was that going to a per-bedroom basis and reducing the requirements for parking could potentially make properties more feasible for development of apartments, or whatever it may be. I will say that if that was something that was considered, and the, obviously, the comparable is the Parkway neighborhood, if we took that and changed it to a per-bedroom basis, there would be a significant reduction, not signi, I guess it's not significant, it's, it's right around 90 bedrooms, or 90 parking spaces less than what is provided.
That's significant.
And in my opinion, if we were to move towards something like that, these flexibilities and reductions would probably be limited even more so than what there currently are. Maybe less the parking study, because that is a, it's a, it's a finite document that kind of provides a specific reasoning and...
Could ask why this came about? Was it just you're looking at other cities and saying, "Yeah, I would think we're overparked," or has there been concerns or complaints about, "Are you guys building a sea of asphalt, and I only ever see the parking lot half-full?"
It's, I would say that it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily that, it's more so we've heard, or at least planning commissioners and city council members have heard, that the parking requirements for multifamily is strenuous. So, that was one of the things that we wanted to just look into as this got brought up.
From developers.
Yes, and...
You know why.
Yes, absolutely, I do. And then, and then I think that that comes down to the, the educational side of things and kind of putting things into perspective. We've had developers come in and say that our, our fees for development are too expensive and make projects not feasible, and then you do an apples-to-apples comparison of surrounding communities, and it really turns out that they're not that far off.
Correct.
And certainly not the highest in the area.
Correct.
So, I think part of it is just providing that, that opportunity for staff to kind of state their case as to why that, why the developers do request certain things.
Yeah.
And that it's, it's, it's good to be cautious when things like that are brought up in the middle of a meeting, so...
Yeah. I mean, my recommendation, or the, the way I look at this, is that you're 100% correct in the fact that parking needs differ from city to city, community to community, and even within the city, it's, they're drastically different. Now, Dayton is, is not a first-round suburb. You know, the, the mass transit system isn't as robust as, you know, a first-round suburb or, you know, Minneapolis-St. Paul area. They absolutely could get away with, I think we saw proposals that was 0.6 stalls per unit, I think it was? I forget what, what city that was, but that's because, you know, everybody who lives in that area that walks, walks, or goes to, you know, gets on the bus, or, or the light rail or whatever it might be. You know, in the city of New Hope, we had a developer come in pretty recently, I'd say five or six years ago, with an apartment building, sold us, it was a, it was a tight property, they sold us on a reduced number of parking, because they compared it to other developments that they had, and that those other developments were also overparked. And so, they said, "Well, we can get away with this amount in, in this proposal, and we're having problems with, with not enough parking on that, on that property." Is that because we went along with what the developer was suggesting? Maybe. Was it because of the mix of the, of the tenants in that building and the fact that, that one person has three cars? Maybe, right? So, yeah, I think there's, there's a give and take there. So, I think that the long, the short answer to my, my long ramblings on here is the fact that I, I think you should address it when you, when you feel that it's becoming an issue, and that you should always err on having too many parking and too little parking. So, you'd never want a situation where people have to park on the street, because there's no other place to park. And that's where I live, I have to, I have to park here, right? So, just, just my two cents, I guess, on that.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing up the parking on the street as well, because in a lot of communities, people have the opportunity to park on streets.
Correct.
Here in Dayton, we are not, we do not allow parking overnight on any streets within the city. So, that's another factor that comes into some of the justification of why there are, this language is the way it is, so...
Yeah, I really like the idea of if a developer comes in and says, "I can't do two, I could do 1.6," well, have them do that traffic study. Have them commission that traffic study, and say, "Here's, here's the traffic analysis, here's the personnel that's gonna be, you know, residing here, here's where they're going, here's where they work," yet we feel that they only need 1.6 per unit, or bedroom, or whatever you might come up with at that point. But I, I like that idea of getting that study done in those situations.
Yeah, make, make them do the legwork, not us, right? On those particular cases.
If the impetus here is from developers, and that's where we're hearing that from, and not folks that live in the city, I'm inclined to not put any weight on that, just to be blunt. I don't think we should change what we currently have. I think if you, if you make a mistake, you can't put more land. I mean, if, if the developer's gonna come in here, and I don't blame them for this, this is just the way it works, they're gonna come in and they're gonna wanna put as big of a building on a postage-sized lot that they can, and put as little parking as they can get away with. They don't care about the future, because they're there, they're gone, and they got their money, and, and they're gone, and you're stuck with, "Where do all these people park?" And then you start getting complaints from people, "You know, my car got towed, you know, it was on the street overnight, there was no place in the parking lot to park." I think we err on the other side, like Jeff said, and I think we make sure that there's enough parking for people and for, for people visiting them to park there. I think the, the way we currently have it written is, is just fine.
Hayden, this was also, we're also getting this from businesses. So, you know, how does, how does that work in here? You're not touching that with this, right?
Not, not with this, I guess that was a...
Event center though?
What's that?
You talked about event center parking though.
Yeah, event centers is... Yeah, event centers is, is one thing that I did bring up. But if it's related to commercial or industrial parking, I have not done any analysis on that.
We haven't heard from any specific businesses. We, we've not heard from any specific businesses, so.
I think we have, I'd have to go back and, and figure out which ones. But we are continually told our parking is over. So regarding the sands, we haven't got any complaints, but were they compliant with our, with our current ordinance?
So that wasn't. There are only fifty, there's only fifty units in each of those buildings.
Right.
Which would warrant, based on this, if I'm not mistaken, I think that it would have required a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twenty spaces or so for each development.
What do they have?
I have not dug up the resolution yet for that, for that one to see if they'd met it.
I mean, so at best, if they met it, then that wouldn't really tell us anything. If we haven't gotten any complaints, other than it's, it's, it's enough.
Essentially, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, for, for the sands, we've had complaints about oversized, the parking of oversized vehicles, which you don't plan for, for an apartment.
In general, I would always err on, let's not force more parking than needed because I'd rather see green space than parking lot. But at the same time, we do need to protect the residents and not the developers when we're looking at these ordinances. I think as long as there's a way for a developer to come in, whether it's PUD or something, and, and come in and make that proof of parking, whether it's through the study or ghost platting, proof of parking, you know, if we're going to start with this, but we've got fifty more stalls that we could add, you know, in the future, and they prove how they're going to do it and everything, like, and let them do that legwork to show us that they can have less, I'd be, I'm open to that. But, because again, I'd rather have less parking in most cases than more, right? We don't want the Walmart parking lot concept going on here, but.
If, if I could just add to that, I think a part of it too is just education for the designers of these sites and getting them to realize that there is more to the parking regulations or the parking code than just that one-line item about, this is what we require. Because the sections that I referenced in there regarding the proof of parking or the parking study are not right one after another showing those areas. So I think it just also comes down with a conversation, educating these developers with some of the opportunities that they have or the alternative opportunities that they have related to parking. So I think that's part of it too. But again, this was something that was brought up and just kind of wanted to get the story out there, try and summarize the situation and bring it to the planning commission and see if we can come to an understanding of whether there is a problem that we need to solve or not. So I appreciate the dialogue.
Do you happen to have a synopsis of what Commissioner Brown or Commissioner Demuth had to say?
Yeah, the synopsis was, Peter was supportive of leaving it as-is with the flexibilities that were allowed. Darren had a little bit more context related to what he has seen in the professional world related to parking requirements and that there is opportunity. I believe, this is a terrible summary, and we could certainly, I can check with Darren and share those thoughts with you guys if he'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great, because if we have additional thoughts, then maybe we can send along to you too before they go to council.
His, his focus was really addressing the change from going from a per-unit base to a per-bedroom base to try and make it more accurate of a requirement. And, but maintaining that one-to-one undercover ratio. So every unit has an opportunity to have a covered parking space.
I agree with that.
How, have you looked at how that applies to what we've done with units that we've built here now? If you did the bedroom count versus the unit count?
Yes, so I did a.
Compare apples and apples.
I did a, I did a comparison of one bedroom requiring one space, two bedrooms requiring two, and three requiring three for the Parkway neighborhood. And that was where I got that eighty-five to ninety space reduction for account, if you were utilizing that. Now, that also doesn't include the half a parking space for five dwelling units for, for visitors. I think that it gets up to more, closer to eighty or seventy-five space reduction in that development.
And is that development, would that development be able to take advantage of those seventy-five? In other words, do they need those seventy-five stalls that would have otherwise been reduced going to a per-bedroom basis? So if I drive by and tonight, when you expect all the parking stalls to be utilized or close to it, are there seventy-five free parking stalls right now?
Right, based on what they provided, and this is more of a matter of what the intent was for their proposed parking because they did propose three-hundred-and-forty-five spaces. Now, whether that was trying to, one, meet the intent of the code, do as much as possible, or the three-forty-five was the identified number that they felt feasible for that hundred-and-eighty units. But that'd be certainly a good question that we could ask the architect about.
Or even call up the, is there a manager or something, like, call somebody?
It hasn't been constructed yet.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
So the Parkway, we also had a lot of reduction in parking lot width. You know, from ten feet to nine feet. And so if, if we had reduced eighty stalls, maybe they, we just want to make them bigger.
I think visitor parking is important too in here, especially in those lots. I feel like some of the stuff we've been seeing, they don't have enough visitor parking or it's very limited. And I don't know how we work that in or if that's just per-development and we try to make comments at the time, but.
I agree with that, it's always been frustrating for me to go visit somebody that lives in one of these places and you're driving around like you're at the Vikings stadium trying to find a parking spot because they don't have enough visitor spots, but.
And there's a lot of, lot of, lot of language in the code for parking related to that. Like this one up here is the, on top of the two spaces per unit. So if there was a hundred-and-eighty spaces within that, you'd have three-hundred-and-sixty, if my math is right, three-hundred-and-sixty spaces. And then on top of that, every five units, you'd have to add five, have to add a half a space for visitor parking. So those are on top of what is normally required on a per-unit basis.
So what are you looking to get from us tonight, other than this discussion?
Just this discussion. What, what my intention is to do is to provide a summary of our conversation that we had. And I want to include Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Demuth's comments and send that out or maybe have that as a, whether it's a old business, part of the, the commission agenda. Just to revisit it and say, this is where we landed. Is there any further discussion as, you know, I anticipate that there might, may be additional discussion with a full panel, so.
We have a whole list of potential ordinance amendments that are more based on complaints that we've heard, whether it's from developers or residents or business owners that were, when we have months that are slow, or if you're right, and we're going to the commission and say, okay, here's a problem, here are possible solutions. Do you want us to prepare an ordinance? So similar, several months ago, we talked about where do you put garbage cans and driveway airprints? And should garages be bigger? A lot of work went into those ordinances, but not all those ordinances were approved.
Did you want to touch on event center parking?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to get to briefly. So this was a, a conversation recently had with the Thicket Hills Vineyard Event Center. The, there's, again, a little bit of a discretion, a discrepancy, in my opinion, in the zoning ordinance related to event centers because there are parking standards in the event centers for an interim use permit within the egg districts. That was what was approved for the Thicket Hills Vineyard, excuse me. And there is separate language related to community centers, assembly halls, what I would almost consider an event center within that language that only requires one space per three people rather than one space per two at max occupancy. So given the, the legwork that the applicant actually did at the time, he provided some comparisons of surrounding communities to bring to the city council before they recommended approval or they approved the project. The majority of those were one space per three or four. So that was just a discrepancy that we wanted to clarify. If it, staff's, my preference, at least for the, for the planning commission to consider, is matching those. And my recommendation would essentially be to stick to that one space per three persons at max capacity. And that max capacity does include any employees that would be on the site because that counts in towards the occupancy load that is reviewed for the plans.
Yeah, I agree. I think that they, those, that language should be the, the same one per, and one per, for every three is, I think is probably a universal standard for this type of use anyway. So I agree that that's probably the way that the ordinance should be amended. And the fact, I like what we did with the vineyard situation too is that, you know, we understood that this could be a phased type of proj-, project. And the fact that they gave us the proof of parking was, was good enough for us to say, hey, look, they don't need to get all the parking right away, but if there is ever that, that need for it, we know where it's going to be located, so.
Yeah, I'd support the one-to-three as well. I think that seems fair to match those. Just to clarify too, the, the max occupancy is based on building code?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Whereas the.
As opposed to like the developer or owner saying, this is like making up a number, right? Like it's building code based.
Exactly, yep. So that was in the site plans and the, the architecturals that were provided for that building at four-hundred-and-ninety-eight at max occupancy.
Yeah.
So that is the number that is utilized to verify that count.
Yeah, sounds good.
Well, those numbers aren't set by the developer, right?
They're set by the building code.
Yeah, the building dictates by square foot.
Yes.
Yeah. And a lot of times, especially in a bed place, like, you know, wedding venue, it's based on overall square foot and then you throw tables and chairs in there and everything. And you, you end, you end up with more people per occupant load than what you probably can fit in there. So it's a pretty conservative way to, to manage the number of stalls then.
Yeah, and that was the other thing that was brought up too. Do we ever anticipate that building to have four-hundred-and-ninety-eight people in there at one given time? The answer is probably not, but it's not a positive no. So in terms of erring on the side of caution with parking, that would be consistent.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Guess we can move on here. Item eight C is discussion, more discussion on home extended businesses.
So this is a, would be otherwise a simple amendment to the home extended business for interim use permit provision under the Home Occupation Code. One of the requirements is that the property owner needs to reside on the property. In practice, it has been found a little bit difficult to verify where these people or where these business owners do live. And concerns have been had over that. And there are a couple of businesses that are on non-home-studded properties within town that are approved under an interim use permit. Being that it's hard for city staff to verify on our own that, that is the primary residence of the, the person who wants to run the business on that property, as a part of the homesteading requirements at the state of Minnesota, they have to provide verification that that is their primary place of residence. So if they are already going through that process, staff wanted to bring up a question to the, the planning commission whether they would be comfortable with requiring that for people requesting home extended businesses on their property.
What do we usually require currently? If somebody comes in and makes that application for a home business?
Well, one will verify that the property is in the applicant's name that is applying for the interim use permit. However, in recent approvals, there have been times where the property owner is the, the property owner does not live there, but the applicant is the renter that lives on the property. Now verifying that beyond a utility bill or something like that is very difficult. And I don't know if I would consider a utility bill in someone's name as proof of residency, primary residency on that property. So this would be just an added step for verification that, okay, he's got a homesteaded property or his name is on the property ownership, we can confirm that this is where he lives. So that, that would essentially be what it was for.
Have, have we ever considered asking for a copy of their ID? Their state ID or their driver's license?
We certainly.
That's got to be where they lived in, right?
We certainly could do that, we have not in the past. However, I would say that those aren't always accurate as, as well. There have been times, and I've recently, and discussions with some people at City Hall, that their ID does not match where they live, and it's been like that for two or three years. So those, although it is a better mechanism, it's not as, it doesn't provide that assurance.
I think at some point, though, I mean, you're going to find different situations all the time, right? So I think at some point, the city has to say, we did our due diligence. We did, you know, we went through the process to verify that, you know, that the name matched up with the address that this person wants to conduct the business out of. And if it happens to be a different situation, if it's a complaint or anything that comes in, at least the city has that backing to say, you know, at the time of application, they were living there or they provided enough proof that they were living there. So, you know, obviously, you know, the easy fix here would be, or one of the easy fixes would be to require the property to be homesteaded. You know, the county records show ownership and then they show the address of the owner. So a lot of times, you know, if it's a rental situation, if the owner, information on the county records shows a different address than what the, the subject property is. So also rental situations or where the owner might not live on the premises, you can find that through utility billing. Sometimes there's duplicate bills that people want, right? So I want one sent to that residence, but also to the one I'm living in primarily also. So, I mean, I think it's just up to the city as far as what you, how you want to better manage it. I don't see it being a prevailing issue right now. But if, you know, certainly requiring that homestead would be another way of controlling that requirement for sure.
But in order for them to live there and conduct the business there, there's no requirement that the property be homesteaded.
Not right now.
No. No, there isn't, they don't have to do it, right? They can live there and not homestead the property. You don't have to homestead your house. I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't, but there's no requirement by the state that you have to do that.
For tax reasons, you might. For tax reasons, you might not want to homestead it.
Right.
Even though you live there. Yep.
So I'm, I'm not quite sure how that accomplishes. We want to make sure that the person that's, that's following through with this actually lives on the property and is conducting his business while they're living on the property. But does that accomplish our goal?
Well, yeah, I, I completely agree with the conversation. And this is more of a brainstorming idea, what, what could come from. At, at a certain level without, I mean, they could provide certain documentation and things of the like. At, at a certain time, staff just is looking for a certain comfortability level to say, we trust the information that was provided, we feel that is okay for this property, proceed. Not saying that this is a, this is an immediate issue or anything like that, but something that had been top of mind as of recent events.
Yeah, obviously, what the city wants to, to get away from is someone purchasing a house and using it for their business. Saying this is a perfect spot, you know, it's a single-family residential home, I'm just going to use it for my business. You know, I'm going to do all the production or whatever it is in the basement, I'm going to do all the packaging in the first, you know, whatever it is. And out everything goes. And I don't see that as being a huge issue in Dayton. But obviously, you want to try to, to, you know, get away from that situation, and I understand why. You have those concerns. I just think it's going to be a preference of city staff and, and how you want to approach that to say, we've done our due diligence, we are satisfied that this person lives here and we'll issue that permit. And then if complaints come in, again, what I was saying before, or then you could do a further investigation and say, look, it's, obviously, you don't live here. You have to, we're going to revoke that license.
Sure. Yeah, I think the only reason that this really came up, to bring up for discussion today was it's been noted by residents and people from other communities that Dayton does have very flexible interim use or home occupation standards. And obviously, that can be seen in two different lights. You know, the benefits of the property owners and the non-benefits to adjacent property owners or people that maybe they don't want them doing certain things on that property. So I, I guess if, if I were, if I were to provide any feedback, this was more of just a suggestion on how do we proceed and feel more comfortable allowing certain things to happen within the community? Do I think that it is going to change anything in terms of an operational standpoint? I would say no.
Do we?
One way to look at it, so the, the intent of a home business is the, the primary use of the property is a home. One way to look at it, so the the intent of a home business is the the primary use of the property is a home and the accessory use is a business. That hasn't always been implemented. If we required a property to be homesteaded, it's a little easier to do that. So as an applicant, you're not looking at a property as this is both my business, income generating business and a rental income generating business. As our code is written right now, it allows you to do that, but it's it's up to interpretation of the commission and council also.
So right now a renter can't can't do this.
Right now they would have the opportunity to do so.
By homesteading, then they wouldn't be able to.
No, what I'm saying, um, do our requirements require them to? We don't require them to own the home, right?
Correct.
So this would be the owner, how do we put it? The renter would be the applicant, the owner would be an employee.
Right. And this would this would not allow renter this.
This would not allow allow rental properties to uh get a home extended business permit.
Correct.
Is that what you want? Is that what the city wants? Do you have a you have a rental license program, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, what percentage of the housing stock is is rental? Thirty?
Two?
That high or not?
Five percent maybe is?
Five percent?
Uh, I think it's like two percent.
Two percent of single-family rental?
That that are licensed.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, that's that's way that's way low.
Right. That's that is way low.
That is way low. I mean, you're gonna see a thirty-seventy split mostly, um, depending on the community also, but I guess once you get closer to that thirty percent, if Dayton ever gets there is then you're kinda telling thirty percent of your single-family housing population that they can't afford the same, you know, luxuries that a a homeowner can.
They can't sell big goods out of their house.
Right. And I and so this is what I do. I'm just happen to be renting instead of buying owning the property. I think what we're trying to get away from is that owner
Not live.
Running his business or her business from the house and then renting the back room to somebody else to get that dual income type of thing. Yeah, I would think that if it's the renter applying and it's their business, I don't see why that would be an issue unless you guys have seen otherwise.
No, I I I can't disagree with that and uh I will note too that this is separate from a home occupation permit. Uh, this is specifically for the interim use permit for home extended business. That's only allowed on properties greater than two acres. So then it takes out another section of that. Again, I appreciate the feedback and I uh I would say that uh, again, this will be summarized and brought back for just a once-over uh review. But I I certainly have direction to move forward and I'm not in disagreement with the discussion here.
I think it's important that you that you follow the path that you're 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 doing here because I don't see that problem and some people call it a problem, right? In the in a neighborhood, I don't see that getting better. I see it getting worse. It's like, you know, it's like the commissioner said. It's the more people move into the Dayton into Dayton, the more you see that. I've seen that in the last ten, fifteen years. I mean, there I know there are a lot of places in town that are conducting business. You know, out of off their whether they live there or whether they they're homesteaded or whether somebody else rents there and runs their business out of their backyard, I have no idea. But you can see that in the use in the property. All you have to do is drive around the city. You could you could drive around today and in twenty minutes you could find five or six places that fall into that category. And in discussions that I've had with you guys, I don't think that those places fall into, you know, following the proper channels that you would want them to do. So that at least you can have a handle and know what's going on within the city. Until you figure out a way to wrap your your hands around how much of it is going on and the only way you do that is by making them prove to you through certain criteria, whether it's the homesteading or or a state-issued ID or or what or up. And I guess you know, your light bill or something like that, it's easy to change. I mean, I get light bills from three places. So and I don't live in all three places. Some of them aren't even in the county. So that's easy to get. So I don't I don't think that helps you, but to me a state-issued ID would would be a perfect thing. I mean, how are you gonna get a state-issued ID if you don't live at that address? If you do that, then then you're in self area yourself are are breaking the law by getting an a state-issued ID at not your permit residence. You can't do that.
It's getting an ID and then moving, you know.
Well, yeah, but you're required in thirty days to fix the ID, right? They can't three years later say, oh, I moved three years ago.
John, you're getting at is people aren't doing that.
Right.
Yeah. Well, welcome to the system. And and we have a lot of rentals that aren't licensed. We have and some of this is you know, part of the home extend business is the impact to neighbors, right? So whether or not I it's always struck me as odd that we were, even though I understand the intent, that we require somebody to live there. Because we already say you can't overly impact your neighbor, whether you live there or not. I know, you know, there's probably a lot of uh farms, right, that they don't live there, but they farm that area. I don't have a big hangup with the with the living there.
Sure.
But I understand what the concern is. The concern is that somebody's gonna move a business in a residential area. Well, if you're not impacting your neighbors, do you care?
The main intent is that the residential property maintains that principal use of residential.
I understand that.
No, no, yep, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah, no problem. Uh, next item is eight D, which is uh discussion on commercial and industrial landscaping standards.
So this is just a a brief recap of uh how the code determines what the requirements are for landscaping in commercial and industrial districts. Uh, we've heard from uh from a couple of conversations with city council member uh members and uh planning commissioners that uh are they've heard things that our landscaping requirements are uh too much for uh developers to take on in terms of uh getting through the process. Uh, so what I wanted to just, this is the the this is the major point of what the requirements are within the city and there are other details there related to um building outline, uh the building edge and fence lines for screening being softened by landscaping. But the goal here is to address at least three of the following uh required items. Uh, the majority of the time that we see within uh these development proposals that they meet the tree ordinance and the tree requirements for A, B, and C. Uh, the one that becomes more difficult to address is the shrubs at uh one hundred square feet of open area, one shrub per one hundred square feet. I, this was established, I believe, uh ten years ago or more. Um, so there's not a whole lot of good uh documentation for uh understanding why there were specific, um, the hundred square feet was a requirement. My best guess would be that that would be otherwise considered maybe a penalty to not meet the tree standards. Or not necessarily a a penalty, but uh for one example would be the telecom uh property, the telecom site that we saw last month. You remove the steep slopes in the wetland areas and just calculate the total open space on that property. Uh, it would have required almost a thousand shrubs on that property. So just to put it into perspective of are we is the intent, you over landscape with shrubs so the majority of them live and concede that some of them die uh or whatever it may be. Uh, but there are other mechanisms that uh require shrubs on the property uh such as those building walls and then the the fence detail, the parking islands have to have shrubs.
The question is who counts? Who counts those shrubs?
It is.
The development is done and now you're out there counting nine hundred ninety-eight, nine hundred ninety-nine. Good job.
We would take the the landscape plan that was approved and go out there and uh it would be broken down a little bit more so in terms of variety. But uh, yeah, essentially through the landscape inspections, those are those counts are a big component to that. So I, my my uh my thoughts here are are that there are mechanisms for them to otherwise meet the intent of the code and still have shrubs provided on the property. Staff is certainly open to exploring whether that threshold needs to be increased from a hundred square feet. But then also that uh might beg the question of whether uh if you say you do one shrub per five hundred square feet or something beyond that, um, then does that provide at least three of the following go away? Those would be those types of questions that uh we would explore if the planning commission would be interested in that. I will say that uh staff has not personally heard um complaints from developers regarding the landscape requirements. These are
Not significant.
These are things that we've heard from uh other uh commissioners and uh city council members. So again, this is just a wanted to provide the explanation, understand the story and how we got here and beg it begs the question of is there a problem that we're trying to solve right now?
Well, subsection D is what you're referring to, right? That's the one that would require tons of plantings. But if they meet the four three, they don't have to worry about subsection.
Yep. Yep. And I think that that might have also been a misunderstanding uh through review with uh going through the processes. There have been times where people say that that is we're requiring too much landscaping because they can't meet this. Well, no, they don't have to meet this because they've met the other three. So it's just really more so providing an explanation as to uh how do they meet this and why? So, yeah, that that's essentially the the extent of the the reasoning.
I mean, in my experience, I think that um, you know, landscape architects are they have a passion for it, right? So they wanna beautify a new development. It's kinda their their stamp on you know, part of their legacy of being a landscape architect, right? They could always point to that property and say, I was the one that designed that. They're not gonna skimp on that then, right? And they'll work with the developer or or the business owner to uh put in landscaping that they think is appropriate, but also that looks good. So I'm I'm not as concerned with all shrubs going away. If we say you don't need to worry about shrubs, they're gonna still be incorporated. Uh, you know, the building envelopes, the, you know, around signs or whatever it might be, they're gonna be shrubs anyway. But I think the natural inclination of landscape architects is that we're gonna include them because they look cool. And and they're they're nice, they're appealing, they're the 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 visual um um, you know, adding to the, you know, the visual pleasure of of walking into a business like that. So I'm not opposed to if staff is concerned about um um, you know, increasing the amount of square footage for one, you know, shrub to be playing, you know, if it's one for every five hundred square feet, that's fine. I mean, I'm fine with that too. But again, you know, the developer understanding that it's three of the four, I think that will help ease some of those concerns that they're they have to.
Yeah, and um I'll just don't do that. Being that this hasn't been a recent issue or anything like that, if a problem does arise, we at least understand how we got here in the first place. Um, and if action needs to be taken in the future related to a specific development or something, we can certainly address it at that time. So.
Yeah, I I don't have any concern at all with the way it's currently written. I do have some concerns about landscape plantings, but number one, um, to me is who monitors the survival of what we require them to put in? I mean, are they still there a year later or two years later?
We do.
Do we?
For for one year.
For one year?
Ask her, don't you? They give you escrow money for one year.
Letter of credit or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to guarantee the developer has to guarantee survival of at least one year. So it the essentially what the the goal is is once the landscaping is installed, we go out there and do a count, make sure that everything is there and placed in the right spot or in the vicinity, um, and make sure that that matches the plan. And then following that year of the growing season, we would go out there and ensure that things survived. And if not, we would mark those trees or shrubs and send that along to the developer and they would have to replace that at their cost. So.
Right. So if a developer is putting in a street, well, just just I'll just use Rush Creek Parkway because it's there and we can look at it. The the plantings there in the median between the two lanes, that was part of the plan that they got approved for the development. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. So in project, larger projects like that, it's typically there's a planning and a development and that goes above and beyond the the requirements that we're talking about tonight. So it's usually not a requirement for zoning code. It it would be as part of the PUD though.
And then Dayton has like a tree replacement policy, right? So commercial and industrial, bunch of trees died off, you could say, well, you need to replace them because they're per the plan that was approved.
In redevelopment, so not like after the fact. So if a business has, you know, twenty trees that die ten years after the project was built, they're just dead trees.
Or five years after this, they don't like the trees, we're gonna remove them all.
They they can do that.
And that uh has happened in residential districts too where.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I I think residential is, you know, you you own your property and you can say, I I don't like those trees. I mean, we've we see it too where it's like this development, you got two trees. What we don't like when they're torn up like a week later after they they got their CO, right? So, um, but I think in 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 uh commercial and industrial, we should look at uh potentially requiring the replacement, even if it's a fifty-year-old tree that dies off, say, hey, look, you have to replace that. It's part of the plan that was approved initially and we wanna, you know, ensure the integrity of of that approved plan through whatever process it was, if it was PUD or site plan or whatever it might be. Something to consider.
I would I would agree with that. I think if they're required to put them in in the first place.
Yeah, New Hope certainly does that. We we use caliber inches. I know some people use, you know, percentage of or just one-for-one replacement of similar like style trees. And obviously, if you have Emerald Ash Bor or Dutch Elm or whatever it is, maybe take some consideration on those. But uh, yeah, I would I would encourage some kind of tree replacement plan for commercial and industrial.
Would it be possible to run our current planting requirements past one of the landscape architects that the city works with, like, you know, that I think it's MSA that's doing the Eleanor Stevens Parkway and just get their feedback on kinda what these requirements are from because, you know, they're not the developers, right? Like so, but they would have a nice kind of understanding what other communities do and what a reasonable requirement is for, you know, square foot per tree type or something.
We could make an inquiry, yeah.
Thank you.
The other the other thing that that concerns me about this subject is the trees along the roads that we're building, like the Parkway. I know I've brought this up a few times at uh at council meetings, but I mean, I hate to keep picking a Rush Creek Parkway because it's right in front of me. I drive through there all the time. The intersections and the plantings along Mambeadian in the center of the road, to me, there shouldn't be anything within seventy-five feet of each of those intersections. We have crosswalks, we have the the trail that crosses north and south on Rush Creek Parkway. You can stand a fourth or fifth grader on their bike in the middle of that road in the summertime with the shrubbery and the flowers that we have in that road and you drive by there, you wouldn't see that kid until they're right in front of your car. I mean, why on earth would we not have some kind of rules with which, you know, they have to keep those areas clear?
Sure. So the those are all reviewed by the planning commission and council.
And the planning commission?
Yeah, I I can speak for for my neighborhood, you know, I I remember I was here when that was built, but reading the the minutes for that. So the entrance to my neighborhood has an island. Uh, the island is pushed back from the street quite a bit. You know, I remember reading in the minutes is because someone made the comment that people take the curve too fast and therefore the median should be shorter so you can go around the curve faster.
Makes sense.
Yeah. But it also, there's a lot more visibility. So and yes, you can make the curve faster too.
Yeah, I I just worry about some little kid getting hit there. You know, the the park is right along that particular road, the park is there. I mean, some of the homeowners along there have skating rinks in their backyard and you see kids going, you know, across there, the park trail goes or trail that's theoretically going to go to the park at some point, maybe, um, crosses.
Some of the residents there complain about it too. I talked to Marty about like, I think it's mostly, I think they're called Indian grasses. They're really tall. You can't see anything through those, yeah.
No, they there was they we had some purple things planted there this year. They're beautiful to look at, but you're right. I mean, the median itself is raised the bed, you know, with nothing on it but grass, is raised, you know, a foot fourteen inches above the road surface to start with. And then when you put another foot or two feet of plantings on top of that, it completely obscures. At some points, you can't even see if there's a car coming across. So it's just dangerous. I I I think that we should make sure that we, whatever we do in the future, you know, fix that, obviously. But future roads, we should have some type of language that prohibits us having that type of planting anywhere near an intersection. That's that's line of sight is critical.
I think we should update our standards for the crosswalk signs to be the ones that are here. I think we should update our standards for the crosswalk signs to be the ones that are here. We push the button and they flash. You know, especially on any road that's, you know, yeah, so what? Forty, you know, 40-plus mile an hour road should have crosswalk signs that flash lights, you know?
And judging by the one next to my house, they fail quite often. I don't know if that's true, but that one does.
It doesn't work, or it doesn't?
It just gets stuck, and then you hear it.
And it just keeps going?
Well, there's a bee Bennett, there's a-
The one by the school you're talking about?
No, the one right by my house, right by-
Oh, okay.
I talked to Jason, and he's had them come out. It's just, yeah, I don't know what their survival rate is, but-
I take that road coming in, and this morning there was someone that used the crosswalk but did not use the flash.
Well, that's- and that's-
At least it's there. I mean, I-
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if there's one car coming, I hit it over here, crossing. I'm not- I don't trust drivers.
Yeah, I like-
No, you're right.
It's just that, yeah, they're pricey and-
Yeah.
Although, that's relative, right?
Yeah. So, we want a safe community.
Well, moving on, I think that the next slide on the presentation is indicating that Hayden's ready to talk about the next item here. Item 8E is a discussion regarding storage containers. Hayden or FitzJohn?
Yeah, this has been the Hayden show all night, so I guess-
Keep it rolling, man.
I gotta get my five minutes in. So, our city code does not require or does not allow permanent storage containers. We do have them in the city. I guess the question is, does the commission have an opinion of should they be allowed or not allowed, so?
Are they not allowed on any size property?
Not for permanent use. And then the question, well, what's the difference between permanent and temporary? I don't believe our code has a definition for that. I'm interpreting as if it's more than six months of the year, it's permanent. So, the two examples we have, one is of Fisher Farms. This is a storage container that's used as a concession stand. The example on the right is interim use permit for a home business that has a storage container that was used as storage. This, you know, in both cases, these are structures that are not allowed by code. We are not enforcing this.
I mean, it's definitely more popular now to use storage containers for things.
People making homes out of them.
Yeah.
That's true. Absolutely, yeah.
I actually had the one at Fisher Farms. It was pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't offend me at all.
I think the issue here is what the storage container is being used for, and what I'm saying is we call it a storage container because we call it a corrugated metal box, right? What does that box being used for? Is it being used as a concession stand? In which case, it's no longer, in my opinion, a storage container. It's a concession stand that happens to be built out of the same materials as a storage container. Or is it a- I'm using this as storage needed to run and operate my business? I would- what I would say is that, you know, the Fisher Farms, it looks like that was probably- it's probably founded correctly, right? It's probably- it looks like it's a concrete slab. It's probably adhered to that slab. It's not going to go anywhere. It's- the use is more of a permanent type of use, and it's kind of like that kind of niche type of architecture of saying, you know, this is the corrugated style that we're trying to go for. I think that looks awesome. I want to, you know, encourage that type of use. The picture on the right, to me, is like, well, we have no other place to put this, but we really need storage. And that's not what I would say is a great use of the property for that type of temporary solution to storage that could otherwise be done in a different manner for even a, you know, for a commercial or industrial setting. So, the question might be, are we going to allow these types of building materials to be used for the uses that are being proposed? That's a different scenario with the concession stand, other than are we going to allow these corrugated metal storage containers to be used on a more of a permanent type of basis? My stance is that, yeah, I think that we should not allow the storage containers on a permanent basis. I think that the code is good in that respect. And I think we should look at allowing these types of materials potentially for these kind of one-off projects, right? Because, you know, there's examples out there that look good, but you're going to find someone that's going to take advantage of that ordinance, and it's going to be an example that really doesn't look good. So, it's hard for commissions and councils to regulate what good looks like.
Yep. Well, it's really hard to have any kind of idea what good looks like when there's no ordinance telling you-
Correct.
What's appropriate and what isn't appropriate. If that- if that building was painted the same color as the building behind it, you probably wouldn't even see it sitting there. You know, the fact that these containers, they're in red, orange, green, they're all these different colors. If somebody gets one and puts them on acreage, which is where I think they probably should be allowed, not on small lots. I mean, there really isn't any- I don't think there's a good way to fit that into a small neighborhood. But if you have acreage, like a lot of the folks do in Dayton, I don't have an issue at all with them having containers. But I think that we should have some kind of rules on what they need to look like. If you bring them in and the thing is fire engine orange, you know, and it sticks out, you know, from outer space, I mean, I don't think that's right. I think it needs to blend in, and whatever building you build needs to- it needs to look like it belongs there. I mean, it needs to look like it's the color of your barn or the color of your house or whatever it might be. And I also think it needs to be set back from the road. You don't want that out in the road. And if people can see it, maybe screening, natural vegetation screening so that they can't see it? I mean, I'm guessing from the road, you can't see that as ugly as that is.
You can't see either one of these from the road.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yes, and you said a 10-acre minimum or something like that, and then have added after that, or?
Maybe.
This is going to be a function between the rural versus urban type of development that Dayton's seeing, right? So, you're not going to see these in my neighborhood. Number one, I have an HOA. They're not going to allow them anyway. The applicant in front of us, the very similar neighborhood that he lives in, and they don't have an HOA. So, they could potentially put this in their backyard, a storage container like this. Would we get complaints? You absolutely sure that you'd get a complaint about a corrugated metal storage container sitting in someone's backyard?
Especially if it was orange.
In these dense residential areas or-
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it would have approved it tonight if that's what it was, right?
No one would- no one would approve. I mean, that's a 40-foot container there. That's as big as they get, right?
But that's on a farmland that's probably no one sees or, you know, they drive by and it's, well, it's just part of the farm equipment and apparatus and everything that the farm is using, and who cares? Because it's- they're trying to make you run a business and earn a living.
If my neighbor- if my neighbor on a small lot had one of those that's eight by eight or 10 by 10, and they painted it the same color as their house, which we require them to have, it would just look like another shed. I wouldn't care at all.
We have canvas garages all over the place, and do you ever get complaints about canvas garages?
No, but we don't allow them.
I know we don't, but they're all over, and nobody cares.
Every farm has one of those, you know? They store hay in them, or they store the tractor in them, or-
Well, you want a shelter. I mean, I would, assuming there's stuff in there, I would assume, I would rather have that there than the stuff exposed.
Yeah.
So, really- The alternative is having them build a permanent storage structure rather than renting a corrugated metal box, or maybe-
But nobody's renting those.
Well, what I'm saying is that it's a cheap alternative to what is going to be required.
Yeah, but then, like, they've already got a building there, and now they got a storage container. Like, is that two accessory buildings?
There you go. I would say yes.
If it's permanent, right?
Yeah. And then I'm sure we have rules and regulations as far as your accessory buildings need to be architecturally compatible with the principal structure?
Only on properties under an acre.
Under an acre?
Yep.
So, that constitutes for farmland and things like that.
I don't want to, again, kind of speaking on Commissioner Brown's behalf, but in the email that he did provide to myself and John, he did mention that if these were to be allowed in any capacity, there should be an emphasis on an acreage limitation because there are egg properties that are one acre. There are egg zone properties that are one or two acres in size that would otherwise look similar to a newer development property sold. Not to say that he was encouraged to allow these, but that was the-
I'm just barely over an acre myself, and I wouldn't want to put one of these in my yard, and I don't want my neighbors to have one in their yard, you know? So, maybe it's a 10-acre kind of thing, or? I'm not opposed to it. You know, I think it's inevitable when you got large acreage sites that you said, "Maverick, I'd rather see that than the stuff loose in the yard."
And I know-
But I'd rather not see like five of these lined up either, you know?
I know, at least a couple of the canvas garages are there because they can't, by our ordinances, put a real garage in where they want that canvas garage, so they put the canvas garage up. And there we are. So, I mean, we're sometimes, you know, the cause of our own problems, so. We, you know, and staff is aware of this, but we had those things at the old Public Works Building four years in the middle of- Everybody could see them. They were stacked wonky. It was as ugly as it gets.
The whole building was wonky.
Yep.
Still is.
Firefighting, like, training thing or something?
No.
No? They were just a-
Stuff.
Stuff?
Yeah.
I don't know if Marty kept stuff in there. Do you remember? At the public- the old Public Works Building?
I think we did use it for fire training. I mean, there's windows that were cut into them.
Yeah. I don't think so, but-
Maybe that was the story going around at Justice Park.
They weren't even orderly.
No.
I mean, every time this come up, I'd point to that. It's one of those things where, you know, cities like to put rules in place and then follow those rules, and that was one of those things. I don't have a problem with these, especially. I would have a problem with them, you know, in your development. But I personally, if I think once you got above one or two acres, I'd have no problem with it. Because, again, people are putting it there for a reason. That's because they want to store something in there. Now, you could, you know, if they're there for any length of time, you could say, "Look, that's now an accessory structure. It has to comply with our count and our square footage." You know, maybe you do that, but, you know.
Yeah, maybe it's a five-acre minimum, and if it's there in place unmoved for a year, then it has to comply with accessory building.
So, of the four discussed, so we have for parking, really, it's no change?
Yeah, not at this point, other than the event center parking language.
For a home extend business, it's no changes. Landscaping was considered a reduction, and then do a little bit more research. And storage containers would be to prepare an ordinance amendment that would allow these under- on larger lots and where they're not visible.
That's-
Yeah.
I think that wraps it up, yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason people are buying these things is because they're so much more economical to use. I mean, they're one-time-use containers, and what do they do with them if people don't buy them and use them as a shed? They get crushed up like an old car and thrown away. You throw too much stuff away. And those things are way stronger than any shed that you're going to buy and build out of sticks, let me tell you. I'd rather have one of those sitting next door to me and fasten down than some, you know, Menards or Home Depot stick building that a good, strong wind takes it and drives it through the side of your house. I mean, those things are not going to move. You got to fasten down.
They're heavy.
They are heavy, yeah. They're very strong. You could set a car on top of those things. I wouldn't try that with a plastic shed you got from Menards.
Or Home Depot or Lowe's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any box, any box store, I should say, right?
Discriminating.
Absolutely not.
Retail.
They lose money at Menards. Just ask my wife.
11% rebate.
All right. Let's move on here. Item nine, notices and announcements?
Okay, let's see. So, a couple of weeks ago, we had an open house for State's Manufacturing. Large events, so there's the council, I believe, was all there that went on a tour. Should know, you know, as you drive down there, you can see kind of the, they refer to it as the airplane hangar door for the larger units that they built. So, State's Manufacturing, if you recall, they're based out of Champlin. They build-
Electrical containers.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. It's containers, electrical equipment and containers. So, utility boxes, not small ones, but great big ones. So, these are, I don't remember what the size of this, they have an order to build 86 of these, for example. So, that is why they have a half-million square foot building. Coming up next week on Wednesday, October 8th, is Ribbon Cutting for a Quick Trip. That opened this morning at 5:00 AM or a little before 5:00 AM. I'm told that they had a line of customers lined up in front of the store waiting for them to open. Elsie Stevens Park Master Plan. Each of the council and the commissions had appointed one person to represent them to kind of, as a steering committee, Paul was our planning commission's representative. The draft for this will be presented to the Park Commission next week and then the council on October 14th, I believe. So, more to come on that. So, just look at that today, or the consultant finished that today. It'll be an exciting, very exciting and a little expensive, but we'll preference the excitement part. Construction or reconstruction of 125th and East French Lake Road, Millan Overlay Project. That will take place in October. And Dennis, maybe you can correct me. I believe that is all of 125th from Fernbrook to East French, and then down East French Lake Road to Territorial.
A lot of our roads updated last couple of years.
Yeah.
Did we get any feedback from certain landowners to do this project during that time period?
Yes.
Right during harvest time?
No.
Old pumpkin patch. Wow, that's harvesting pumpkins.
Yeah, I think, you talked to Jason, and I think they were going to. So, I believe, you know, they allow traffic during this time. It's just, it's his busiest weekend, so.
They did sell Diamond Lake Road in a day each way.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable how fast that went.
Yeah, it is. It's amazing. It's amazing to watch. It's kind of cool. Yeah, I don't know if they, how they worked something out, but I know, just I drove through there. Must have a run or something out there. Some sort of a, I don't know, but there were people at all over the place. So, doing a pavement job in the middle of that might not be too cool, but not much that can be done about it other than try to coordinate.
Ladies Night Out, Saturday, November 8th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Dayton Activity Center. Tell you're all interested in this. Name that park. So, we've referred to this as Area 21 Park. So, this is between Sundance and Brabird. We already have a Sundance Park off of Rush Creek Parkway. So, it's kind of a name that park contest. Names are due by October 15th.
This is the park that's partly on Sundance and partly on Brabird?
Yes.
They join each other, or?
Yeah, so the intent, what, going back before all this was developed, is to essentially gain about two and a half acres from four different development projects to create a neighborhood park. And it's taken, you know, I don't know, I'm going to say 10-plus years to obtain that. We're about three-quarters of the way now. But we still need a better name than Area 21.
Sounds like a UFO site. We just need a spaceship there for the kids to climb on.
Yeah, it's the playground could be a space theme.
And the reason for Area 21, so in our comprehensive plan, we have essentially neighborhood park plan across the city and where we, geographically, where we would see a park, and they're just numbered up. So, this is 21.
It's be 21.
Jack Mulater Pumpkin Trail. So, this, we did this last year. It was, turned out well, so we're doing it again. So, you can donate a carved pumpkin. It will be- So you can donate a carved pumpkin, it will be placed on, along the routine wall, along Elsie Stevens Park, and becomes a lit pumpkin trail. There's a coupon here for fifty percent off purchasing a pumpkin at Dean's Country Manor, at Dean's Country Manor, Dean's Pumpkins. You can register your home to be part of the City of Dayton Holiday Lights Tour, so if you register by November twenty-fourth, you can get your property on a map, and the obligation is that your yard or your house will be lit between December first and December thirty-first.
So good-looking lights.
Those are good-looking lights.
They're exempt from the lighting ordinance for that timeframe, right?
Yeah, holiday lights are exempt.
There's much more in the picture than what I could fit on here.
Yeah.
Cards and cribbage continues on the second and fourth Thursday of the month, nine AM to eleven AM at the Activity Center. The Givern Garden is still being used, or we still have donors, so once again, this is right outside of City Hall. And then the next Plant Commission meeting is Thursday, November sixth. I will add that last month, we talked about moving the December fourth meeting, and I think the consensus is to move it from Thursday, December fourth, to Wednesday, December third, so one day earlier.
Got it. Works.
And when, Thursday, December fourth, is our Holiday Dayton Parade.
Great, well, being that that's the end of the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
No, second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Adjourn the October second, twenty twenty-five Dayton Plant Commission meeting at eight twenty-one.